Okay. All the recording devices are rolling? Very good. I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. We will begin with our invocation. Mr. Administrator, when you are ready, please proceed.
Pray with me. Father, we are ever so grateful for blessings abundant. We're grateful to be residents of a wonderful county. We're grateful for committed and engaged leadership in that county. And we're grateful also, Father, for the blessing of a workforce that is absolutely committed to the safety and security of county residents. We are blessed, and we are very appreciative. We ask this all in Jesus' blessed name. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
My pledge is that we lead the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which we stand, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson. Here.
Thank you. That brings us to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion related to approval of today's agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Motion has been made for the approval of today's agenda. Is there any discussion? Are there any additions, deletions, or any other changes contemplated on this agenda?
No, thank you.
Very well. Since there is no other discussion, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
That brings us to meeting schedule. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the commission will be a business session that will take place Wednesday, January the 12th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. By the way, just as a point, because I do see there are a number of people here who are not usually in attendance, in the case of, we just did approval of the agenda vote, on votes, the presiding commissioner does not vote, except in the case of a tie or some other specialized decisions to be made. So my not voting does not necessarily indicate support or non-support of an issue. It's the way our new constitution is written. As long as I've kind of called us to a halt here a little bit, we will be looking at our today's agenda, the decisions that we will be making, for the most part. We'll be whether to put them on the consent or regular agenda for next week. So just so you understand that we're not doing a vote on every item, but we take two meetings to consider each issue, for the most part. So just so you have a reasonable expectation of where we are going. With that, that brings us to honorary resolutions. We have none on today's agenda. Under discussion items, we have one issue. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, the Clay County Auditor, Mr. Hurlbert, is here to talk a little bit about the issue of a property, the Clay County Property Tax Surcharge, along with some other individuals. So I will turn the podium over to County Auditor Hurlbert.
That would be great. By the way, as the people go towards the stand, we are going to be discussing the surcharge that is a property tax surcharge. We have our assessor, who is going to be kind of giving us some background, and then we will open up the discussion. So please proceed.
Good afternoon, everyone. Commissioners. What this discussion item is, this has been thought about for a long time by me, that it's a commercial surtax, and it was actually, it's an outdated tax that was brought about in 1985, and it was voted on by the taxpayers.
Could you speak just a little bit more into the mic, please?
What it originally was, was an inventory tax for industrial, large industrial companies. Since it was very hard to keep track of an inventory, it was always fluctuating. The state of Missouri put it to a vote to have a commercial surtax for all commercial properties in each county, or in every county in Missouri. At that time, which when all these values were set in 1985, they were based off the industrial inventory, which we had Ford Motor Company, which had set the inventory rate of that fairly high, which ours is currently at $1.59 per assessed $100 in evaluation. To put that into perspective, our neighboring county, which is Platte County, is .36. Jackson County is $1.44. We're actually the third highest in the state. So when that was adopted by the taxpayers in 85, they also put a provision in there. The only way that this could ever be adjusted was by the taxpayers. As I had done a little bit of research into it, I have found out that we could, there was two ways that we could do it. We could get a petition of signatures based off of the last presidential election, which as we all know, that it was quite a large election, and it would be lots of signatures. The other way is we could present it to the commission. The commission could put it on a ballot for the taxpayers to vote on. The reason that I think it's a huge thing for Clay County is because, you know, like I said, our neighboring county is .36, and we lose a lot of our business to neighboring counties because of this. I hear a lot of our commercial property owners in the county very confused of why they have to pay this and how it came about, and it's, you know, it's not always easy to explain to them. So I felt the need to kind of bring it out in the open and kind of see what we could do, because I feel that it's, you know, a little unfair in today's times because of the way the assessed valuations have increased. And I think it would be a really good thing for Clay County to see if we could get that adjusted. Also along the lines, the state average is around $1.03. And again, we're at $1.59. We're the third highest in the state. There's only two other counties, which is actually St. Louis County and St. Louis City are higher than what we are now. Since then, I have talked to several people about how to do this, and I think we've came up with some plans. I've worked really close with Victor, the auditor, about some different ways to help alleviate this and how we could see less of an impact. If we were to reduce it, how we could reduce it to where it wouldn't impact taxing entities' loss of revenue. So if, you know, if there's any questions, I can open it up to you. I'd like to turn it over to Victor to kind of let him present some of the ideas that we've came up with.
Do we want to go ahead and hear from Victor Hurlbert? And then we'll go ahead and have our discussion among the panel here. That way we'll have the maximum amount of information to start from. So, yes, Mr. Auditor, if you would like to proceed?
Thank you. Yes, Victor Hurlbert, Clay County Auditor, and thank you to the assessor, Tracy Baldwin. I'll just say, my role on this, I did a couple office holder change audits this year, one for the sheriff and then for the assessor, as we know, because we had changes in those positions. And so in working with the audity, this was one area because of something that the new assessor had been thinking of, to look into and analyze what that impact might be like for our taxing jurisdiction. So we gathered some data from the clerk, from the collector. Basically, long story short, we have 17.8 million in tax bills across all the taxing jurisdictions that we collect money for. So keep that in perspective of, you know, over $400 million of all tax revenues that we collect. But that is really the surtax revenue that we see. And to the assessor's point, what we analyzed was to look at is, so every year, other property tax levies, as we know by the Hancock Amendment, or Article 10 of the Missouri Constitution, you're basically held harmless, where you have to roll back your levy based on increased assessed valuation. You can't receive more revenue than inflation. The surtax is different in that it's stagnant. It's never rolled back. So that's just a provision in Article 10. So it's a little bit unfair in that respect. But in looking at the impact of how to make up for any lost revenue because of rolling back the surtax rate, we looked at the existing property tax levies. And when you look at new construction, because the pro forma in calculating each year's levy excludes new construction, basically what you have, the bottom line and the analysis my office performed, is that if you were get to about a dollar, or let's say, you know, 60 cents over five years, 12 cents a year, the net impact, to make that up, is essentially you're going to need 36% of new construction as a percentage of real estate, today's real estate, commercial, real estate assessed valuation. And we looked at how much of a percentage commercial real estate is of commercial, new construction as a percentage of commercial real estate each year, and estimated this is going to take you roughly five to 10 years, if you went all the way down to, let's say, that state average. Now, that's really kind of the worst-case scenario, because we took a new construction average of roughly 3% as a percentage of commercial real estate. But obviously, if more businesses come, if more employees move, as a result, that time shortens from, let's say, worst-case 10 years. In addition, the assessor's office had some analysis as well that shared with us, is that because surtax is exempt from the Hancock Amendment, and does not have to be rolled back currently, ultimately what you have is, you have to also consider increased assessed valuations every year. And so, assessor's office looked at average reassessment, say, 8%, and what that did is it lessened the overall reduction from 17 million, the reduction of, say, 6.7 million over, if it were reduced, that 60 cents, to more like 3 million. So it basically cut it in half. And so that would also shorten the timeframe. So as far as the analysis of what that impact would be for taxing entities, the bottom line is essentially, they would make it up in, you know, roughly five years. And then, all the new construction they had included in their assessed valuation, they would have on top of that for future years. So that's really, in looking at the, you know, financial impact to our taxing jurisdictions, that's something to consider. I will say, there is a county impact. There is a Clay County impact. We collect, currently, we have a, to our general fund, we have some surtax revenue, roughly $38,000. Our highway fund is $280,000. And our parks actually get $380,000. So there's that impact. But again, the same story when we consider all of our other revenues as a result. So that's something to consider. I think I really appreciated the assessor's analysis. I highlighted that as well, how we stand in comparison across the state. You know, one other thing to think about as well, that was mentioned in the research we looked at, is this really lessens the desire for any other tax incentives, because if you lower the overall taxes, why would you want to abate those taxes? So that's just something else that is another factor in all of this. So that's that. I actually have, I have a publicly available audit on my website, and I'll go ahead and hand these out as well for you, for what I just spoke about.
One of the reasons that, you know, I was looking forward to having this brought up was, this gives us a chance as a commission to start examining this issue and assessing how it is that we as a commission want to go forward on this. I don't anticipate any action in the, you know, next few weeks, in the immediate term. I think we also, the hope is, this will also spark something of a public debate, so that we can have citizen input prior to any action that we take. So I'd certainly appreciate the numbers put forward and the information put forward by both the auditor and the assessor. I think, and a point that Mr. Hurlbert just made, I think, which is a very good one, and that is, when you do tax abatements, when you do incentives to bring businesses in, it is by definition generally going to be focused to a specific entity or group of entities. When you're talking about lowering a general tax rate, it is, I think, certainly much more evenly doled out. It's not, it is basically more fair to all entities concerned. So that's one of the things that certainly, to me, appeals. The other thing that I think is highly concerning is, for us to be at the top of a list of that sort is not one that is conducive to our attraction of jobs and of businesses. I think that this could be easily rolled into the economic development package to, you know, working with entities like the EDC to make this county much more attractive for businesses to locate here and to expand here. So hopefully, this will be something that will be used as a greater argument, that Clay County is indeed a place where businesses are welcome and that job creation is encouraged. So with that, I'll kind of open it up for discussion between the other commissioners. Would anybody like to start?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you to our assessor and auditor both. And, you know, I had an opportunity to discuss this and a few other items with Assessor Baldwin, and very grateful for that conversation. And look forward to discussing options on this. Obviously, you know, being competitive is important, and at the same time, making sure that we are working with our school districts and other taxing jurisdictions to make sure that there's buy-in from various stakeholders before we make any big decisions in terms of revenue changes. And, you know, in discussions with Assessor Baldwin, I think there are also other ways, in addition to this, that maybe can go alongside it, to make sure that we are as fairly as possible and fully as possible collecting the appropriate amount of revenue from, you know, some of our larger corporate entities as well, that may be able to help offset any losses that come by lowering this overall rate. So, anyway, appreciate the discussion, and, you know, I think it'll be an important thing going forward.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. No, I, thank you so much for bringing this forward, and I know we've had separate conversations about this as well. I think this is something great to really look into and dive into. We do want to stay competitive. We want to make sure we're bringing businesses with new jobs here to Clay County and be in the front-runners of that. So, yeah, I just, I look forward to looking at this a little deeper and seeing what we can come up with. So, thank you.
Something that Commissioner Carpenter had said, which I think that we all agree with, and that is, the discussion needs to include not just the public, but businesses affected and those taxing entities. Everybody has to have a seat at the tables where we can come to a good consensus of where we want to go forward and how we want to proceed. So I'm looking forward, you know, over the next couple of months, coming up with those kinds of discussions with the object of, once again, as a county commission possibly dealing with this and making a decision of where this commission would like to, if we would proceed, how, in what manner, we would like to proceed. So I'm looking forward to that discussion, you know, over the next period of time, so that we can come to a good and thoughtful conclusion. Is there anything else that anyone else would like to add? Is there, since this is a discussion, I'll just ask, was there was anybody from the general public who had any comments or thoughts that they would like to share? Very good. And in that case, if there's no further discussion to be made, thank you very much for the data, and we look forward to the continuing discussion. That brings us to public hearings. There are unlisted for today. There is no consent agenda today. That brings us to our regular agenda. Before I go to the administrator, I just want to point out that there may be some persons who are interested in making comments to the commission, as the assessor and the auditor just did. When you come forward to make your comments, please state your name, make sure the little green light is on, and speak directly into the microphone. That way, all the various recording devices will be able to pick up and record your comments so that we have those. So, that said, Mr. Administrator, we will start with 2022-05.
Commissioners, first, I'd like to offer my apologies to Assessor Baldwin for not including him in my introduction when I talked about the discussion item. Clearly, he overcame that oversight, as I can see. So, 2022-05 is a request to approve an RFP number 8521 for a term and supply agreement with Tiger Correctional Services. This has to do with the Sheriff's Office and Detention Food Services. This is a first read that's going to be asking for a vote due to some very challenging circumstances that they're dealing with in the detention area right now. So with that, I will turn the podium over to Captain Agdarian for a further comment.
Captain, you may proceed.
Good afternoon, and commission. Captain Amy Agdarian, Clay County Sheriff's Office. This is a request for approval of an RFP with Tiger services, Tiger Correctional Services. And as Mr. Salisbury mentioned, this is being presented as a request for immediate action, and I do understand that that is typically something that takes the commission outside its comfort zone. This is not something we would normally ask for. However, there are some exigent circumstances that I'd like to bring to your attention as to why we would even request this. Our current vendor has been with us for several years, and there were some issues that arose about a couple of years ago. And over time, we have been working with that current vendor to address some of the concerns. And it has become apparent that the circumstances that initially led us to be concerned are continuing. There are some issues with staffing, some contractual obligations that have left some concern for us. Those are not being met. And it's our understanding that the current vendor has asked for the contract. Well, they'd like to be removed immediately. And we would like to proceed immediately because there are concerns about contraband coming in through the kitchen. And with lower than necessary staffing levels, we can't police that contraband coming in, and the vendor is not able to do so either. So it is our request that this contract, I'm sorry, that this RFP with Tiger Correctional Services be given consideration for immediate action and voting today. I do have Lieutenant Tracy Wade with me. Lieutenant Wade is assigned to the Support Services Division, Support Services Unit in Detention, and she worked very closely with purchasing on this RFP. And she is available to answer any questions you might have, or offer some additional insight. But that's where we stand, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much. Yes, the reasoning behind the quicker-than-normal action seems to me to be very valid and highly appropriate. We appreciate you acting so quickly once this issue came to light and you were able to respond as quickly as you did and bring it before us to keep the momentum going on resolving this issue. Are there any questions of the captain?
No questions, thank you.
Is there a motion for the passage of 2022-05?
I make a motion to approve 2022-05.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2022-05. Discussion. Did you have any discussion, Commissioner?
Thank you, yes. So the motion is to approve today. Will there be a separate motion because we're doing it in an expedited manner, or is it all in motion? I guess, okay, very good. And so this will require a unanimous vote in order to hear it this week and pass it this week.
That is correct.
If I could follow up on the commissioner's inquiry, does that unanimous require the presiding, or is that just the two associates?
Just the two.
Very good. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. No, I appreciate the captain's remarks, and, you know, it sounds like an important and pressing issue, and I will be happy to vote in the affirmative.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I'll tell you what, is there any other comment from members of the public? Is anyone else who would wish to comment on this particular issue? Commissioner Thompson, if you'd like to make any comments or questions, and you will be recognized to close at the conclusion of those comments or questions.
No questions. I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
That approves 2022-05.
Commission, thank you very much.
Thank you. That brings us to three items, which are companion items, 2022-07, 08, and 09. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, excuse me. This is a request to approve a planning and zoning request, excuse me, in the matter of subdivision approval. That would be for Waters Edge Estates. And Kip Jones from the Planning and Zoning Department is here for further comment and information.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager. So this is a request for rezoning preliminary and final plat for a proposed subdivision called Waters Edge Estates. I've got it pulled up on the screen. It is a seven-lot subdivision off of Quinn Road. You can see it's surrounded by Smithville Lake. It actually butts up to Corv Engineers Property on the north side. This is 168th Street to the south. This property is located in the natural resources tier of unincorporated Clay County, which allows for a five-plus acre lot. As I stated, the proposal is to divide this into seven lots. Most of the lots, lots two through seven, are right in the seven-acre range. Lot one is closer to 10 acres. So they all meet that five-plus acre minimum. This case was noticed in the Courier Tribune, and adjacent property owners were sent certified letters, since it is a rezoning. There are five rezoning standards which review and decision-making bodies should consider, and those are on page one of the transmittal. The applicant received all their outside agency approval. I will note that the highway department is requesting or requiring the developer to improve Quinn Road from 176th to the north property line, so they are going to be responsible for widening and overlaying that road. And you'll notice that's one of the conditions on this staff report. The applicant did receive all their outside, other outside agency approvals. And there is a small section of floodplain that's located on the property, but with the lots being so large, it will not affect the one single-family home that is allowed per lot. We did receive opposition at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. That opposition revolved around the size of the lots and the types of homes that would be built on the lots. I believe Brandy did pass out the opposition email as well. The Planning and Zoning Commission did vote four to zero to recommend approval of the rezoning preliminary and final plat with three conditions, which are a couple changes to the plat, the road improvement, which needs to be paid in full to the highway department or completed before any building permits would be issued for these lots. And then the water district is also requiring that the water main be extended to be able to serve these additional lots. I'd be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have, and the applicant is present as well.
Thank you. One of the questions I have, and I noted in the opposition email that there was some concern about the aesthetics, clearly all around it, obviously, the Army Corps land is not developed, and it seems to have very little developed around it that butts to it, with the exception of the upper right-hand corn. I guess there's one to the south of it as well. Can you just give us a rough idea of the size of lot that those particular, and I assume they're single-family dwellings with possibly some sort of outbuilding for the storage of vehicles or farm equipment? Can you give us an idea of what the size of the lots are in the immediate area and how they would compare to the proposed lots?
Yes, Commissioner. So these lots directly to the east are much smaller. They're in the three-acre range. You can see there's probably six or eight of them there. If I go a little bit farther east, these are also three acres. And then there are some larger acreage as well. This is a 20-acre parcel, nine to 10 acres. If I go out even farther, this is an area that we've seen quite a bit of development over the past five years. This is Apex Acres. That one was in front of the commission not too long ago, where it had a five-acre lot, a 10-acre lot, and a 20-acre lot. And then Trail Creek Estates, which is right here, was done recently. They had multiple five-acre lots. So the seven to 10-acre, overall, it's probably slightly smaller, because you have some bigger acreages, like this 30-acre piece here and a 30-acre piece here. But it fits in, in my opinion, well with what we've done here recently, with the three-acre lots to the east, and then some of these five-acre lots to the south.
That was the impression that I was coming up with, was it fell rather in the middle of the two different configurations that are existing right now. So they kind of fall right about in the middle, as opposed to, you know, being either one of the larger 20-acre lots or one of the smaller three-acre lots. So it doesn't seem to tip the balance that much. I assume that those, with the exception of the one building, I guess, on lot one, I assume the other lots are, do not have buildings on them at this moment?
I believe, let me zoom in. I think there's one accessory building, but there are not any... I think there's one accessory building, but there are not any houses on the property at this point.
So they don't have any residential-type buildings?
That is correct.
That you're aware of?
That's correct. I think there's just one farm-type building is all.
Okay.
And it's located right, here's the one building on Lot Four.
I see. And the buildings that would be, the houses that would be put up on the lots are, in fact, single-family dwellings?
Yes, one single-family dwelling per lot is our general rule. The one exception to that is what's called an accessory dwelling unit, which is a smaller version of a home. It's designed to be more like a mother-in-law's quarters, and you're allowed one accessory dwelling unit per lot as well.
Very good. Are there any other questions of Mr. Jones?
Thank you.
Very well. The applicant is present. Certainly, we always like to give the applicant the opportunity to speak. It is not a requirement, but if that person, if those persons would like to speak and be heard on this matter, they are certainly welcome to do so. Would the applicant care to make any comments?
No, I'd just like to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Does, do any commissioners have questions of the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
By the way, in the case it wasn't picked up, the applicant mentioned that they would be open to questions, but that there were none posed to that person. That said, are there any other persons who would like to comment on this particular Seeing none. Once again, just for the benefit of those here, we will, the decisions we will be making on this and further issues are whether or not to put them on the consent or regular agenda. Consent agenda is a group of items that are non-controversial and do not require the spending of money that would be voted on as a group next meeting, but on regular agenda means that they will be taken up on an individual basis, much as they were today. What is the wish of the commission at this point?
Mr. Jones, was there any other opposition besides this one letter we received?
No, ma'am.
I'm comfortable with putting it on regular in case there's anything else that needs to come up before next week.
Yeah, Mr. Jones, there was, was there more than one person in opposition at the meeting?
No, no, sir. The letter you have was also the person that was in attendance that opposed at the meeting.
I see. All right, very well. The, I wouldn't say motion, but the preference has been expressed to put this on next week's, these three items grouped together on next week's regular agenda?
Thanks for me.
Very well. In that case, 2022-07, 08, and 09 will appear on next week's regular agenda, again, as a grouped, and then they will be taken up at that time and disposed of, there will be, we would anticipate a vote then at that time. The applicant is obviously more than welcome to attend that meeting, which would be, as just noticed in the meeting schedule, that will be next Wednesday, the 12th, at 6:00 PM will be the meeting where that will be taken up, if you would care, if you are interested in attending that one as well. That brings to 2022-10, Mr. Administrator?
Before I do that, it was kind of always my understanding that a mother-in-law's quarters was generally preferred to be like in the next county. Maybe that's my mistake.
I have been married for some years, and I have, I have decided that I will be...
Be careful.
Careful is a good thing. Careful is what I intend to be.
This is being recorded.
You may proceed.
Okay. 2022-10, Commissioners, is a request in the matter of a Clay County zoning order for budget industrial rezoning to take it from agriculture district to limited industrial district. Mr. Jones is here for further comment.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager, and how am I going to miss those jokes that Mr. Salisbury has?
Not much.
Yeah, how indeed.
So this is a unique request. This is a rezoning request. I've got it pulled up on the screen. It's outlined in yellow. This is a unique area of the county. You can see it's off Old 210 Highway. This property abuts the Missouri River. It is east of Missouri City. You can see very sparsely populated, bunch of farmland in the area, and then I'm going to turn on my floodplain layer because that also plays a role in this request. And the general summary of this request is the request for rezoning from Ag District to I-1, which is limited industrial, for the purpose of allowing the property owner to, and there you can see the floodplain kind of blow up in the area. So if you see these white hash marks, that means that's floodway. That's where we regulate even more in that area, and then where it's just the kind of dotted areas, that's floodplain. But you can see, obviously, this whole parcel that we're discussing is mainly within the floodway, and I'll zoom in so you can see a little bit better. But the request is to rezone this to I-1 to allow for the movement of freight along the Missouri River on barges. So a unique request, not something we see every day. It goes through the same rezoning standard as any other rezoning case, which has those five criteria. Adjacent property owners were notified by certified letter. This case was noticed in the Courier Tribune. It's located in the rural low-density tier, which generally we would not consider industrial zoning in that tier. However, with this being such a unique property and with that amount of floodway and floodplain on a property, there's very few uses that are allowed in that type of floodway, and this is probably one of the better uses. We generally worry about if we're zoning something to industrial, opening it up to all those other industrial uses that are allowed in that zoning district. I don't worry about that with this property because of that floodway and floodplain. There's very specific permits that will be required of this use, and then if anybody would want to propose some kind of industrial building, there's even stricter regulations because of that floodplain and floodway. There is a railway that runs to the north. The railroad company indicated that they have no opposition to using this access for this proposed use, and then MoDOT also gave their approval for this type of use coming off of 210 Highway. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval, and staff is, like I said earlier, this is one of the few places that we would recommend industrial zoning, but we think this use makes sense for this lot in this specific area of the county. The applicant is present, and I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
Thank you. What, you were saying it would be used to facilitate barge traffic. Are we talking about loading and unloading, or are we, what, could you kind of give me a little bit more detail on that, if you have it?
Yeah, so my understanding is they would stage material. They're going to build like a landing in this area with a, some sort of platform that would go over the river. They will have to get permits through the Corps of Engineers for the work that occurs within the Missouri River. They'll stage the material, dump trucks would bring it in, and then they would load it or unload it from the barges. My understanding, it could be anything from sand to riprap material like that.
Okay, yeah, that's, yeah, that makes it a little bit more clear, because as you say, it is unusual, to say the least, a usage, but it sounds like, as you pointed out, perhaps one of the few productive uses of that land as far as any kind of industrial commercial use. Are there any questions from the commission?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
Mr. Jones, was there any opposition to this? I can't imagine, but...
We received no opposition. I spoke to the property owner just to the west that's probably most affected by this, and he was actually in favor of the rezoning.
Thank you. No other questions?
If the applicant would care to comment, as I had said on the previous issue, there is no requirement. If the applicant would like to comment, certainly we would welcome any information, but absent that, that would not, that would not be something that would be a problem either way. So if the applicant is present and cares to comment, certainly they are welcome to do so.
I have no questions or comments other than the fact that Mr. Jones stated the facts that were pretty clear. There are several issues regarding permits that have to be...
I'll tell you what, if, because you're kind of getting a little bit more deeply into it, if you could go to the microphone.
I don't have any comments.
Okay. In that, yeah, I didn't, I wasn't trying to force you into it, but I wanted to make sure any comments you had were relevant. The applicant basically does not have any further to add. I added a few comments, but substantially, I think we're, I think we're okay with that. So are there any other, are there any other persons who would like to comment on this particular issue from the public? Seeing none? Are we looking at a, what would the commission like to do as far as, I think, you know, I'm not too bad with just the idea of putting it on consent. Does anybody else?
I'm good with consent.
I'm comfortable with that.
Very well.
And that's consent with an approval.
Consent with approval. Thank you for that clarification. To the applicant, by putting it on the consent agenda, it will be grouped and voted on as a group, so certainly you are also welcome to come to next week's 6:00 PM Wednesday meeting, but it will not be taken up separately unless a commissioner requests it be taken up separately. Thank you. That brings us to 2022-01. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2020, excuse me, 2022-01 is a request to approve ARPA funding to Arts KC to assist arts of Clay County through asset mapping. This is a request coming through the auditor's office, and Auditor Hurlberg will be taking up residence at the podium for the next few minutes, and this will be his first presentation.
Should we get you a nameplate? Mr. Auditor, please proceed.
Yes, Victor Hurlberg, Clay County Auditor. So Resolution 2022-01 deals with a American Rescue Plan Act request from a nonprofit called Arts Kansas City, or Arts KC, in the amount of $20,000. This would come from our economic recovery account of the American Rescue Plan Act. Essentially, for some background, we received this request initially as a budget request on November 10th. It came right after I had submitted the proposed budget to the commission. So my response was essentially, at this point, we would have to do some balancing with the proposed budget to make that happen. In addition, just to keep some context aware, all the nonprofit and outside agencies we're funding through our 2022 budget were held at steady levels as 2021. However, we did make some, you know, offer to a couple agencies that requested more funding next year, that if their services are eligible with the rescue plan, they could apply. And in fact, just after this one, we have an agency who did just that, one of our existing agencies that we fund through regular budget. So we made that same availability to Arts KC with their request for $20,000. The reason being that if you look at the interim final rule guidance, page 26822, 26,822, number six, seven, and nine, you can see some eligible categories for their request from Arts Kansas City, and those include assistance to small businesses, nonprofits, and aid to impacted industries. As you see in the attached request from Arts Kansas City, they outline a couple studies that were done early on in the pandemic that noted a specific economic impact to Clay County, that their proposed project of arts mapping would help to recover. And essentially, what they are doing, in my understanding, and I'll turn it over to them to give better explanation as the experts in this topic, but is to basically market arts in Kansas City and help that economic recovery for that impacted industry. So that's essentially all I have. I'll say that we did request some more itemized figures, and they provided that as well, which we appreciate that. We have three guests today. We have Dara Knapp, I believe I'm saying correctly. I apologize if I did that incorrectly. I think the executive director, we have Brandon Harrelson with, on staff with Arts Kansas City, and then we have G.K. Callahan with our University of Missouri Extension Council, who partners with this agency as well. So I'll turn it over to them to present, and unless you have any questions, it's me before you do so.
Yeah, before you leave the, temporarily leave the podium, are there any questions of the auditor on this issue?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Very well. In that case, yes, would, and please, when you come forward, remember the light is green, so please speak into the microphone and identify yourselves so that we have you on the recording.
Good afternoon. My name is Dana Knapp, and I'm president and CEO of Arts KC. I want to thank you for allowing us to come here and present this proposal to you today, and also want to show my gratitude to the commissioners for allowing us the opportunity, the consideration and the opportunity to partner further with Clay County. So this proposal is a good step forward in identifying the activity that exists within Clay County, the arts and culture activity. And we often, in working in our five-county region, Clay County being one of the counties we serve, a good first step is identifying the individual artists, the organizations, the individual businesses, education, performing, presenting organizations, in order to really identify who they are, and then how can we best underpin them and serve them and support them. And so this is a really great step for Clay County, and I think it's first and foremost very timely. The arts often play community development and economic development strengthening role in communities, and coming out of the pandemic is a perfect opportunity for us to partner with you and with MU Extension Office to really do a full inventory of the transformative individuals and organizations that exist in Clay County, and then identify how we can best support them, how you can best support them. And so this is really fundamentally an inventory or asset mapping. We would accomplish that with the data that we provide. We have some inherently in our organization, but it also will involve community outreach and community meetings. So we do spend some time in your communities asking individuals and organizations about the activity that is occurring. This proposal would begin in mid-March and run through October. I'm here for any questions?
Thank you very much. I, yeah, I did have some questions. I reached out to yourself and some of the other members, and I appreciate the information that I got back. I have a, certainly a lot, I certainly feel comfortable at this point supporting your effort. I was going to ask, and to make sure that it was all the cultural arts, not just the visual arts, but also I see performance arts, dancing, and the symphony.
All disciplines.
One of the entities that I have a fair amount of familiarity with is Ballet North. There's some, I've known the Luzica family for some years, so certainly glad to see that they have a relationship with you folks. I'm not, I'm familiar with G.K., obviously, but not overly familiar with your organization, but certainly G.K.'s involvement and organizations like Ballet North certainly give me a good deal of comfort when it comes to, you know, the quality of what we can, I can be looking forward to from the work that you will be doing. I also understand that it's fairly broad in that it's, it would be all of the arts, so the fact, I, did I, did I understand correctly that it would also include the graphic arts and things like that as well?
So most recently, Arts KC, the Regional Arts Council, we have been focusing on building infrastructure, and we have broadened our definition of the arts to include creative industries as well. So we are accomplishing this work also in Jackson County, and we are identifying just great activity and transformative individuals that are in all, in many, many different disciplines, not just what you would conceive of as a traditional art form.
Having been involved in more of the commercial and the advertising arts since 1978, I have a real appreciation for the work that's being done, and the vital element that is introduced by the arts when we talk about a community that is livable and that can be attractive to those who are looking to make this their home or this, their base of business, it's easy for us to think in terms of the specific financial incentives, workforce, and those other issues, but certainly a vibrant art community is something that is a definite plus when it comes to attracting businesses and being able to, being able to put a community out there that is much more livable. Certainly, I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from? Are there any questions from any other commissioners?
No, no questions, but it sounds like a wonderful project, and I'm glad that we're able to contribute.
No questions. Thank you for coming in today.
We thank you.
Any other comments from anyone else? Are there any people here who would like to comment from the general public? Seeing none, since this does include the expenditure of money, this would be most appropriate on next meeting's regular agendas at consensus?
Works for me.
Very well. This item will appear on the regular agenda for our next meeting. Thank you very much. That brings us to 2022-02. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2022-02 is a request to approve ARPA funding to Rebuilding Together Kansas City for their Safe at Home program, and Auditor Hurlberg will be back at the podium for further comments.
Please proceed.
Yes, Victor Hurlberg, Clay County Auditor. So 2022-02 resolution is another American Rescue Plan Act request, this time to the nonprofit called Rebuilding Together Kansas City for their Safe at Home program, program in the amount of $30,000. It is again from our economic recovery account in the American Rescue Plan Act, as outlined in the request for commission action. As just previously discussed, this was one of those nonprofits that we already fund with regular budget that had a higher request, I believe dealt with, to a large extent because of higher material costs and just in the pandemic in general. And essentially, because the decision was made to keep all of our agencies and nonprofits at stable funding as 2021, we made this available offer to make up the difference of the request of $45,000 from their existing budget of $15,000, so $30,000 with the American Rescue Plan Act, because we have that funding available, if it is in fact eligible. And looking at again the interim final rule, if we look at page 26794, it specifically references home repairs and weatherization for low or moderate income households. So that's essentially why we, we saw it as eligible. So that's really essentially all I have. The request is attached, as well as the original budget request that outlines the $45,000 total and how it's itemized. We do have the executive director, Clay McQuary, here, who's, who's with Rebuilding Together Kansas City to provide any more information about the Safe at Home program. As our, again, it's going to be also partially funded through our regular budget, which we'll discuss here pretty soon. So I welcome Clay for any further comment, unless you have questions, it's me.
So the $30,000 would be the additional funding? That, that is not the entire funding, but it's just the additional request?
Additional, correct. So that the budget next year is $15,000, so yes.
Any questions of the, the auditor?
No questions, thank you.
Please proceed.
Thank you. As he said, I'm Clay McQuary. I'm the executive director of Rebuilding Together Kansas City, and first of all, I want to say thank you to the commission for several years of collaborating with us in serving families in Clay County, and your funding has truly transformed lives for, actually, we've been, we've been doing this for 20 years now. We celebrated that last year and served over 1,000 families during those 20 years. Essentially, our goal is to eliminate unsafe and substandard living conditions for veterans, seniors, people with disabilities, and families living in poverty. And I'm always amazed at the volunteers faces on our annual rebuilding day, because they come up to me and they say, I had no idea people live like this in Clay County. And if you want to find that out firsthand, be glad for you to come and do some home visits with our staff, and we'll be glad to show you there are indeed those kind of living conditions around. And so basically, this, when I was told about this opportunity for potential funding, like most nonprofit leaders, when you have that opportunity, you, you jump on it, because what it means is $30,000 would be more families served and more families helped. So that's what our, our plan would be for this funding. Interesting, it's called the American Rescue Plan. We feel like we rescue folks every day throughout the county in living in very challenging conditions. And just to give you an idea, the average annual household income of the folks that we serve, almost every year it ends up being right around 20,000. That's what they have to live on the entire year. And let's just face it, they don't have the funds to pay for home repairs when you have that kind of an income. A lot of our folks are in the same building I'm in, in the line for food pantry, because they don't have enough money for their next meal. So we're glad to help folks who, who are in need of help, and this extra funding would be a real blessing for us as an organization so that we can transform the lives of several more families than otherwise we would not. So be glad to address any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions or comments, either one?
Just a comment, which is, thanks for being here, and, you know, I've followed the work of the organization for a number of years, and I actually met you at one of your bowling fundraisers years ago, but.
Yeah, you had a 300 that night, didn't you?
That's right, always. But no, I, you know, the work you all do is very important, and appreciate you being here. Thanks.
Commissioner Thompson?
No, I'd also like to thank you for being here today, and your greatest work with Rebuilding Together is so important for Clay County, and I love your greatest work, which you guys do.
Thank you.
It's, it's very close to my heart, and I, and I just love it, and I'm happy to help you guys out any way we can.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. And yeah, I, I think this is a, this is a good expenditure of these monies. Of course, the organization has a rather longstanding relationship with Clay County, so we are happy to be able to, to increase our ability to further your mission.
Great. Thank you.
Are there any comments from anyone in the public? Seeing none, because there's expenditure of money, 2022-02 would be on regular, if that is the consensus?
Yeah.
Very well. 2022-02 will be on next week's regular agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to 2022-03. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2022-03 is another ARPA funding request, this one for the city of Smithville, for the raw water supply project and the Smith Fork wastewater pump station project. That again comes from the auditor, and Auditor Hurlberg is at the podium for further comment.
Please proceed.
Yes, Victor Hurlberg, Clay County Auditor. Resolution 2022-03 is our last American Rescue Plan Act request of today in this meeting for the city of Smithville. It is in the amount of $805,495. It is out of our infrastructure account as the eligible use for the American Rescue Plan Act. Just a little bit of background on this, this did come, informed this from Commissioner Thompson, as our Eastern Commissioner, and essentially, the city of Smithville and their city council made a formal resolution to make this request, and that is attached in your, in your paperwork. It did include five total projects, but essentially, what is before you is to fund two of those. And the reason being that the total request from that resolution in the five projects was about $6.8 million. That's, that's how much we have, I apologize. The, the total request was for $6.7 million. So we have that, but we also have some requests in next year's budget, some infrastructure requests of $735,000. In addition, the commission will likely need to transfer dollars between accounts to fund some existing applications that are going to be forthcoming, to be able to use the first tranche. And of course, with our, with our second tranche, there's a potential for the Flexibility Act to pass, which would allow a wider flexibility for the commission. So essentially, in reviewing that and looking at the financial reality we are in, we looked at two specific projects, those being the raw water supply project and the Smith Fork project. The reason those in particular, in the amount, total amount of $805,495, is the city of Smithville actually dedicated, dedicated their entire rescue plan, both tranches, towards those two projects. But they still need additional funding to meet all the construction costs, the engineering, the construction costs, which is essentially, they're 27% short. They've already funded it 73% of the way. Now, as far as eligibility, interim final rule, pages 26802 through 3, basically discusses any water and sewer projects in the rescue plan have to be also eligible under two existing federal programs called the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, which is for the sewer portion, and the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, which is the drinking water portion. Under the DWSRF category 3, it is, raw water projects are eligible. So that one is eligible, and the Smith Fork is a wastewater project, and it is eligible because it's a pump station for a centralized wastewater treatment. So the plan that we worked with the city of Smithville, and we'll get to hear from them shortly, is this would be done on quarterly reimbursement basis. They are going to make the payments, so it's not to exceed the $805,495, and we will work to, you know, vet those invoices, make sure everything's good, audit it, and then remit payment quarterly as those come in. So essentially, that is what we have set up. Now, we have committed to them that, of course, the commission, when we get to second tranche, can, you know, at a later time, they can reapply for those other three projects, and they can be considered. But for, for the moment, that is what we're presenting before you today. So with that, we have our city manager, it's Cynthia Wagner, I believe. We have the engineer, Chuck Solis, apologize for any mispronunciations, and we also have Stephen Larson, their, their finance director. So with that, we'll bring up.
Are there any questions of the auditor before we proceed?
No, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Chuck Solis. I'm Public Works Director for the city of Smithville.
Could you speak just a little bit more clearly?
Maybe I should move this. It just muffles it a little bit. Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to present our projects to you for ARPA funding. The city of Smithville treats approximately a million gallons a day of water from the Smithville Lake. We get our water from the Smithville Lake, and we've essentially put together, well, there's four projects in this request, it's kind of separate projects or separate parts, but they've all been bid as one project, and we've got one contractor on site, Urban Build Construction. Our raw water pump station, in recent years, the raw water pump station has flooded, damaging some of our electrical equipment in the pump station. The pump station has also reached its capacity. The work is to replace the existing pump station, locate the new pump station at high elevation out of the floodplain, and the new pump station would have room for three pumps. We're only going to put in two pumps right now, but then at some point in the future, when the need is there, we would have room for expansion. We also have a separate electrical control room and a separate chemical feed room. Second part of the project is to replace the butterfly valve and the, and the reducer. The water travels from the lake through a 69-inch pump, pipe, through the dam to our pump station. The Corps of Engineers maintains the 69-inch pipe and a T that feeds the city of, well, the city of Smithville. We're responsible for everything past that T. So there's a valve, and there's a reducer, and both the valve and the reducer, the Corps is concerned that, through inspections inside the pipe, that they may be rusting and corroding, and, and there's no way to get to them except to excavate them. So the project is going to be to replace the, the T and the reducer, put a new, a new valve and a new reducer, put it in a valve vault so that we can gain access to it, so we can access it, maintain it, and replace it if necessary. In the future, right now it's a 24- to 18-inch T, and maybe I'm getting a little technical here, but we'll replace it with a 24-by-24-inch T, so that will give us the additional capacity if needed at some point in the future, too, without having to go in and replace it. And then I think everybody knows, the lake has been infested with zebra mussels, and the zebra mussels unfortunately grab onto our intake piping, they get clogged in the impellers, and they reduce our capacity in the, in the pump station. The Corps of Engineers has had some success with using copper ionization. They put copper ion machines in some of these facilities, and basically what it is, is we run electricity across some copper probes or rods, and it puts a small amount of copper into the water, and then what we will do is run it, water back up through the pump station into, into the city. So that seems to decrease or kill the zebra mussels, so that will reduce that issue. The Smith Fork pump station as well, that pump station is pretty old. It sits over there by, on the west side of the dam in the campground. The existing pump station gets domestic water flow from the campground, other park facilities, we have several residential subdivisions that feed into it, and all the core facilities. The pump station's located on the edge of the 500-year floodplain. It, too, has been flooded, and it needs to be replaced. So we're going to move the location of the pump station, get it higher up out of the floodplain. We're going to replace the pumps as well. The wet well capacity is right at the capacity of what we need to service the residential homes that we have on it now. So we'll make the wet well bigger so that we have a little bit more capacity, and we'll have the accessibility to add additional pumping there, too. So those are the three projects that we have, and, and like Victor said, we did submit some other projects. They were all wastewater projects. We were, we were thinking that we would come back sometime later after you've received your second payments and maybe talk about those. They don't have to all be funded as a whole project. We, we submitted them so that you'd have our, our list of projects. Any funding is very much appreciated on any of these projects. Just to let you know, we did receive $2.178 million in ARPA funding for our raw water pump and our Smith Fork pump station. Our bids for that project were 2.83, so the difference is the 805 that we're asking for. We've spent over $625,000 on engineering for these projects. The contractor has just started, he just started right at the 1st of December, end of November, with doing some work, barely got some footings in, then we got cold, so that's where we're at at this point. The project has a construction contract date to be done in October of '23, but the contractor actually gave us a, a schedule that puts him done early in the summer of '23. So we can answer any questions if you have some.
Are there any questions or comments?
Does, Cynthia, did you want to say a comment? Okay.
Yeah, please, thank you.
Do you have questions?
Yes, sir, I do. Thank you for sharing. Sure. Thanks for being here, and thanks for helping to explain these projects. I'm like, you know, necessary and important projects, and I'm glad that, that we're going to be able to help. I, I do have a little bit of concern just in terms of the overall numbers that we're talking here. You know, ultimately, we're going to get about $48 million of ARPA funds to the county. Smithville is about 1/25th of the population of Clay County. So, you know, my guess would be, as we go through this process, you know, we are going to direct funds to help our municipal folks, and, you know, I know that we're all eager to, to buy into projects like this where we can help. But obviously, we also, you know, need to, we have an obligation to do this in a fair and equitable way across the county. And at $48 million, and, you know, with you all being about 1/25th of the population of Clay County, when we start talking multimillion-dollar projects, obviously, at some point, the math doesn't really work in terms of being fair to, to other parts of the county. And so I am wondering in terms of where you see the total dollar amount going, we're talking 800,000 today, right? Seems like the initial request out of Smithville was maybe up to 6 million, is that correct?
Yes, it's right, it's, let's say 6 million, 6,35,000. The, the other projects, the 144 Street Pump Station, the Rocky Branch Gravity Sewer, and the South Forest Main, we're under design right now. Golly, the engineering on that's probably close to a million dollars for those three As I mentioned, Commissioner, any funding for any one of those projects is appreciated. They're going to be bid close together, but probably not all at the same time, so there will be three separate projects, you know, and if, you know, when we come back and we present these, if the board finds it reasonable to fund one or two, we'd like the higher ones funded first, but we, we, we're, you know, like I said, we would, we would appreciate any funding. These sewer projects, I wasn't as prepared to talk about them, but basically are on the south and the west side of Smithville. The 144 Street Pump Station is a large pump station that will Station is a large pump station that will accumulate wastewater from the southern part, basically Forest Oaks. Right now, that dumps into the Kansas City Wastewater Facility. They've, they've got capacity needs. We need to get out of there. We're also spending a lot of money paying Kansas City wastewater, a lot of money, a lot more money than we're collecting. The South Forest Main is necessary. Basically, our sewer, our sewer mains along one sixty-nine are at capacity. We have backups all the time. We have pump failures. We have backups. McDonald's is probably one of the worst ones. They call a lot, and we don't, you know, we can't shut down McDonald's. So that will alleviate all, all that congestion and, and facilitate a lot, a lot better service to all those businesses along one sixty-nine. And the Hundred and Forty-First Street Pump Station, as you know, everything in Missouri is very hilly, and we just, we've got, it's got to be pumped. It's got to be pumped. So we'll be able to take out an existing pump station that feeds the Hill of Shannon and several other residential areas with this new pump station. And then we'll be able to, it basically sits in between these two, the, the Rocky Branch and the West Forest Main. So, but we, we understand, I understand that, you know, state has the same issues. We apply for MoDOT funding as well. And, you know, it's always, there's fifty million dollars of requests, and there's two million dollars to provide.
Yeah. No, I, I
You gotta share. You gotta share.
I think it makes total sense for y'all to, to apply for every elemental project. I think it, it makes total sense. And I, again, I appreciate the explanation of these projects. I, I do just want to, you know, share back with you in terms of you, what y'all are prioritizing as your most important things that you need funded. You know, I, this is a fluid conversation around how we use the ARPA funds. We're going to get the additional tranche, you know, later on, as we've discussed. You know, I, I would say it's incredibly likely that, that the num, that the amount of, of that forty-eight million that goes to our, to municipalities will be twenty million or less. I, I think that's fair to say. And so when you think about how much of that twenty million or less ought to go to specifically Smithville, I, I do just need you to keep in mind that we're not going to be able to give every city in Clay County anywhere near six million dollars. It just wouldn't, you know, the numbers just don't add up to do that. And so in terms of which projects are going to be most important, if, if you all feel like this eight hundred thousand dollar project is the most important, then, you know, I, I'm certainly open to, to supporting that. Just want that to be on the table in terms of, of making the numbers add up at the end of the day.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson, do you have any comments or questions?
No questions, but I want to thank you guys for coming in. And as always, I will do whatever I can to help you guys out. And, you know, I'm your, I'm your commissioner over here on, on this side for Smithville. And I do think it's important that you guys have safe, reliable ways to get your water and pump it through. And, and we don't have any issues. And of course, those, you know, pesky zebra mussels. Haven't we been dealing with those now for, for a number of years? So, no, I'm, I'm happy if you guys need this money to move forward with these couple of projects that we can get our fellow commissioners to be in favor of it and help you guys move forward.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of questions, and I do share Commissioner Carpenter's concerns. We're talking about a very high percentage of the monies that were allocated towards this kind of a purpose. And I'm aware of at least one other request that will come in from another municipality that could be in the same range. We're going to run out of this really, really fast. So the question is, have you already signed the contracts? Are you already obligated on this project, or is that yet to be signed?
No, they, they've actually started. They broke ground. In your packet, you'll see some pictures of some actual construction.
So you started the project without having your funding in place?
Well, we've, we have city funds available that we are going to use.
So if this were to, for some reason fail, you would still be able, you would just, okay, yeah, I was, I'm sorry, if you need any comments, you need to be up at the podium, please.
Cynthia Wagner, City Administrator.
Thank you.
We had this project budgeted. We've had plans to fund this through our existing rates.
Sure.
With our, as I think Auditor Hurlbert mentioned, we have committed, as did Chuck, all of our funds for ARPA for this project, basically to provide assistance to our rate payers, be able to complete a project with minimal impact on them. We identified this as a project that made sense for assistance from the county level, predominantly as, as Commissioner Thompson pointed out, and Chuck did. The zebra muscle issue has been an ongoing issue and a costly issue for us. We are working with the Corps to address that issue. And that's what made sense for this, this initial project and request. So we have the funds available in there. If we do not receive this, we, we have it budgeted. If we do receive funding here, that provides assistance to our rate payers and to, to addressing other problems and issues within our system.
Well, certainly, we at the county have, have also dealt with the infamous zebra mussels.
Right.
So yes, we do understand that. But like I say, nonetheless, the, the requests coming in from other municipalities, it's, it's rather difficult for us to say we've given, if, if the next municipality comes along and wants a similar amount, how do we say no logically? So I mean, there's going to have to be some, some limitations here. The thing is, it's important. I like the idea that it's, it's being used for such a fundamental purpose. I like the idea that it's going to be, contribute to the expansion of the county. I like the idea that it would serve citizens outside of Smithville, if I understand correctly. So there would be some in unincorporated areas and, that, that will also be served. So I like all those things. Have you, have you made application for other grants to go forward on this project, or are we the first stop?
Not in other forms for this project, no. Because we knew we were using our ARPA funds on this, it made sense to, to look to the county, knowing that you all had received funds as well. We have limited resources, but we also have limited opportunities for use of the ARPA funds. And it made sense to couple this with, and leverage our funds.
Well, certainly, it is something that, you know, it, it, it seems like it's a good usage of it. But there have been no other applications to, to acquire funding from other sources from?
No.
I, I don't know what the opportunities are, because I mean, I haven't researched this, but I assume that there are other possible sources, so.
Pretty limited on, on funding for utility projects.
We just gave the loan fund potentially, but that's a, that's a loan, basically pay back. You know, a, a small, small term loan or a short term loan. Typically, what I've been involved with, I've seen that municipalities can bond projects cheaper than some of those state revolving programs. So that, that's not used a lot. A lot of it's used by rural water districts because they just don't have the bond ratings, and they can't get the bonds for as cheap as a municipality.
Yeah. And, and what, at what point would you be considering coming back to us again to ask for additional funding? Do you have a, a general timeline that you'd be looking at?
I'm assuming it'd be closer to whenever the second tranche, I, I don't get that word, but
That would be in a couple of months.
Payment of ARPA funds come in. We can do it sooner. We would like to maybe get our engineer, HDR, to bring in some more information when we do that.
Have you already committed to the other projects?
They're still under design.
Okay. I, I guess what I'm saying is that, you know, there, there are, are limits. We want to be as helpful as possible, but we are going to have to be looking at, while that sounds like a very large amount of money that we're entrusted with, let's face it, you put up a sign that says free money, and you're going to have a good line. So far, it's not happened, but it's just a matter of time. So I have a lot of, to tell you the truth, if some of the larger municipalities came with an ask, they, their ask could essentially take their money allocated for this in total. And so we have to be thinking, I, I think Commissioner Carpenter's point was, was an excellent one, and that is, we need to be thinking about how this is distributed, distributed in a fair and equitable way throughout the county. And so I would certainly recommend before commitment to a future project that, that you come to, to the commission and get, get some kind of assurances about where we are at on this. Certainly, you're, you're following the right procedures, so don't get me wrong. But to make many more commitments, you know, with the assumption that that money would, would be here from the county, it, it presumes a good deal.
Well, we won't have plans ready to bid until late summer, probably, for these other projects. So we can definitely come to you maybe in the spring.
Yeah, I had, I, I had reached out to, to the mayor. He was out of town. It's perfectly understandable over the holidays. I appreciate the fact that, that he had family commitments and have no, no problem with that. But, yeah, I think that, you know, obviously, the two previous asks were considerably fewer, you know, smaller dollar figure. When we're talking about an ask of this magnitude of, you know, six million plus dollars in total, certainly, I, I think it's going to require more discussion than, than what we're having at this moment. So I, I, you know, I think we need to entertain it, and I, and certainly, this does qualify under the, the expenditure of money. So this is certainly going to be on regular agenda as opposed, this, this is obviously no way on consent. But, yeah, I would, like I say, it, it would be good if, also, I don't know the nature of the other projects, if they have more potential for getting funding from other sources, but we would, okay. I would, I would like to have, I, I, you, you can understand that I have to ask the question.
Yep.
Have you tried other sources? And we're not, we're not just the easiest source, but we are the only source. I would like to have some confidence in that knowledge. As I say, this is not something that is something I do every day of the week. But we're talking about a lot of money and a substantial percentage of what will go to other municipalities. So with that said, I, I, I don't know if there, are there any other comments or questions, Commissioner?
No, thank you. I appreciate the discussion. I mean, I think we, you know, my view ultimately is, is if this is the number one project, I'm, and, you know, Commissioner Thompson supports it. And if my fellow commissioners both support it, I'm happy to, happy to support it as well. I, you know, I just, in terms of going into the multiple millions, it's just, it's just not going to, I'm not sure that the, that the math will add up to, to go into the multiple millions. But I, I think this, this project is, is certainly one that I think we can look at doing. So, and that, that's all I meant, is if, I don't know if y'all have a list of highest priorities and whether or not this is the one or not, but I think that's something to, just to keep in mind, I guess.
Yeah, I, I mean, don't get me wrong. I think this is a doable amount and all that kind of thing. I just worry about the out, the future requests and the cumulative total that we come up with. So, you know, I, I think this is a, by and large, it's a pretty reasonable request. I just want to make sure that we are exhausting all other possibilities and opportunities that there are so that we are truly meeting your needs.
Absolutely. And we understand the, the struggles, and we understand that balancing act, and appreciate your consideration.
Commissioner Thompson, did you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, I would. Thank you. I think I'll just help with some clarification. I've been speaking with Smithville for some time, and, you know, there's been a breakdown in communication with our previous commission and some of our municipalities and our cities. And this really was, like, I, I came to them, and I said, what do you guys need? We, they've been working on some big projects. And that is why this was not meant to be, like, throwing six million dollars at you guys today. It really was just, this is their needs. I was like, go ahead and put, and I spoke with staff, let's go ahead and work on the, the reasonable, smaller request, and then just get, just conversations about it. So I don't think there was any expectation today to come in and get everything done. It was just more of just, this is what they need, and we can just talk about it.
And by the way, I think you were, you're acting absolutely appropriately by reaching out to the, to the, one of municipalities in your district. I think you're, you're absolutely on the right road here. I just want to express our concerns as we go forward with, with subsequent requests, that there may be some issues that we would want to discuss a bit further. But no, there's, I, I, you know, I don't have objections to generally where we're going. I just want to make sure that we are aligning expectations in a way that, that everybody is comfortable with and everybody understands going down the road.
Sure. And we absolutely understand that. And, and as I said, appreciate any consideration.
Thank you very much. Are there any members of the public who'd like to comment on this issue? Seeing none, I think that this was most fitting to be on regular agenda for next meeting. So twenty twenty-two oh three will appear on next week's regular agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to twenty twenty-two Ordinance One A. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, twenty twenty-two Ordinance One A is an ordinance to, for adopting the annual budget of Clay County for the fiscal year beginning on January one of this year, twenty twenty-two, and ending on December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, with the exception on this particular ordinance of all accounts associated with the operations of the Clay County Prosecutor's Office. And County Auditor Hurlbert maintains his dominance of the podium as he plans to comment on this particular ordinance request.
Let me know if you need a chair. Please proceed.
Victor Hurlbert, Clay County Auditor. And, you know, I also am speaking today on behalf of the overall budget team. And of course, Administrator Tom Salisbury is our Budget Officer. I want to start right off, before I dive into the ordinances, and I'll go ahead and pass these out as well.
Oh, thanks.
And if we want to pull up the PowerPoint, it's not long. It's only four slides. So it's not like the proposed budget, just so you're good. But I wanted to bring us full circle to where we are today, essentially. And I do want to thank the budget team, can, you know, my, my chief deputy, Benjamin Pedersen. I got a finance specialist, Kathy Minton, as well as Michael Reynolds, Finance Manager. So that's the overall budget team. It's been a, you know, half a year, good process. And today, we're looking at the, adopting the budget. I will ask, just for agenda purposes, that we do same pass today with all of these ordinances. The reason being, we want to pass it within ten days when there's no change in the commission. Historically, we've even passed this in December. We waited so that we would have our good carryover numbers. So that's the reason why. But we have not committed a budget yet, so we're basically operating with no budget. So that's why I feel it is, it is important. But let's step through this brief PowerPoint. Essentially, as you recall, we delivered the proposed budget before the statutory deadline, November fifteenth. We discussed it on the seventeenth in great detail. We had a public hearing on the first. Really, the only changes since the proposed budget to today were really incorporating anything the commission did in that interim period, which I'll go over. In addition, we did have several departments request to give merit increases, which happens regularly, as, as authorized to do so. However, in place of the COLA, because that was what was approved in the, in the proposed budget by the commission. So since then, if there are raises, those were taking place. Now, the budget doesn't change by department. It's using their available budget, but just doing that instead of the COLA. And that is reflected in the last clause of our ordinance, the number ones. It's going to be in ten J. So just so that's clear, that, that was the only change to the number one ordinances as well.
Okay.
Moving on to the next slide, highlights, I just want to kind of, from looking at proposed to adopted, I just want to give you a good financial big picture. Essentially, we did have growth in our available operating budget. Now, we have a budget over a hundred and forty million dollars when you include bonds, stimulus, all debt service payments. But operating, including our reserves, we saw a three million increase. That is outlined in your transmittal letter from Administrator Salisbury on the last page, just to give you a breakdown of how that figure is derived. But bottom line, big story, I saw the treasurer here earlier, Treasurer Nance, but we had a record year for sales tax revenues and used tax revenues in this county as the economy opened up, reopened, and essentially, and Clay County is just growing. And so we saw our cash carryover grow in the general fund, roughly three million dollars. We ended twenty at about ten million. We ended twenty-one at thirteen million. So that's, that's good growth. But I, I will say, we're not really out of the water yet. Historically, this county's been as high as twenty million dollars in the general fund carryover. So we've made a, what I would see, if it were, if we were grafted, it would be a giant U-turn from, from twenty twenty. So we've seen that in the general fund. And the highway department went from basically no carryover to nine hundred thousand dollars. Parks went from one million to two and a half million, a one, one point five million dollar growth. So the county financially is on an improving path. And as a result, what this adopted budget do is it grows our reserves. There's been expression by the commission before that we just don't have adequate reserves, and that's, that is actually, you know, truly the case. So what this budget does is the rainy day for the general fund does grow almost three hundred percent, about one point six million dollars. Now, and again, historically, though, this is rather low. It's been as, up as high as five million dollars and, and more. does grow almost 300%, um, or about 1.6 million dollars. Now, and again, historically though, this is rather low. It's been as, up as high as $5 million and, and more. Um, the contingency reserve, which statutorily has to be 3%, at least 3% of general, uh, fund revenues and requires a unanimous vote of the commission to access, um, it, we're also increasing that $200,000, but this has been as high as $3 million. So bottom line, our reserves right now countywide, well, at least in the general fund are, uh, 8%. And, you know, back 2015, 2014, it was 25%. So we're making progress. Last year we were 4%. So we've doubled that in one year, which is good. But just to give you an idea of, of what this budget has. And finally, I'll go to the, the last slide here about the changes. And I will outline that more specifically, but I want the commission to be very apprised of any changes from proposed to adopted. So that when you vote on it, you know, uh, what's been changed. There are eight changes. Um, and I'll pass this out as well. Well, I'll wait until, yeah, I'll pass this. I'll go over this slide and then we'll go over the second document that just gives you the, the in number format. But, um, the eight changes right here in description form, as I said, it's basically anything the commission has passed since proposed budget that we've incorporated because we have to. And so we have the additional airport grants, the CARES Act Airport Grant and, uh, new grants they got. It was a, a 90-10 match. So essentially what that CARES Act, which was flexible for all operations, what that did is make up that 10% match we have to do. So it's, it's a net no change to the airport fund essentially. That's the first change. The second change, park improvement fees, the new fee schedule did away with that. It increased the road improvement fees. So, but it does affect, you know, the park fund very slightly. Again, immaterial, $7,500. Well, number three, I want you to be apprised, we did, we had a rather late request from Bicentennial Commission to have 50,000 of budget available. We initially thought this might be a rescue plan eligible project because you're marketing the county. But as we got into a little more of the details, we just weren't for certain, uh, about that eligibility. So we decided just in case to move it in, uh, administrator's budget to be able to access directly, um, without having them to apply and request those funds. So that's-
Can I ask a question on that one just really quick?
Yes, please do.
If it turns out that that money is in fact ARPA eligible, will we be able to reimburse or is that just, I mean, I realize it's not all the money in the world, but it's a substantial amount of money. Um, would we reimburse the, the budget for that? Or are we just going to kind of go forward with it?
We could reimburse it. We could reimburse it. Or we could just, you know, make, make the application and, and make, um, you know, payment through the ARPA fund instead and just not spend the, um, the, the general fund allocation. So-
I see. So that would just then roll over into, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Um, number four, the next move group, this is a economic development, uh, corporation group that, that county has worked with and identified that they want to continue using. Basically helps identify those jobs that can move to Clay County. Uh, it's 900 bucks a month, $10,800. Um, we had this out of a former, uh, department that we're now consolidating into administration and we had not seen that because, um, is apart from the EDC budget. Uh, so that's why we made that in the administrator's budget as well, just to have and be able to pay from there. Um, number five, we are actually, this has been a years-long problem, probably three or four years. The county is always two or three months behind the election board monthly operational payments. And so I would like to see us get caught up on that so we can budget it correctly. And so what we're going to do is add two months of budget to their account so that we can do that at the start of the year. Um, number six, so we've made some bond expenditures on the 2021B bonds. So what we've done is reduce the 22 budget by that same amount so that we know how much is left. It's called a true-up essentially. Number seven, dedicated impaired driving, uh, vehicles were purchased on that grant, but they can also, uh, equip them. And so we're basically just truing up how much is left to equip those vehicles on next year's budget, rather than the full purchase of those vehicles. And number eight, this is on, and I'll go ahead and turn to the PDF now. It's three pages long that should be before you and we'll pull it up here as well. But the first page outlines what I just discussed in numbers. And then the last two pages are all the carryover adjustments. So this is the true-up I mentioned of why we waited until year end. So now we have our, our good numbers. And this is accurate for, um, for financial reporting. We want to say this is our actual carryover, uh, and it was budgeted as such. Uh, historically, this county has done a true-up some subsequent months later, and that's, uh, inaccurate financial reporting and budgeting. So, um, that's what this does. By fund, you can see, we really only used one or two accounts where the revenue went up. We either put it in reserves, we fully funded our health insurance so that we don't draw down the health insurance fund at all. Um, or we would put it in the only, only account available if it's a discretionary, discretionary statutory fund. So we didn't really make any changes from proposed, uh, in that sense. So I just kind of wanted to give you that high-level, um, discussion and, and presentation, but I wanted to be brief. So let's go ahead and turn to what's directly in front of you. The 2022 Ordinance 1A. This is the actual budget. And so I will state that. And I think you want to do each of these separate.
Are there any questions for the auditor? Very well. Um, is there a motion related to passage of 2022 Ordinance 1A?
Uh, Commissioner, I move that we approve 20, well, yeah, approve 2022 Ordinance 1A.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2022 Ordinance 1A. Discussion-
Are we passing this today?
I thought that was the request.
Is that the request?
Okay, okay. I apologize. I didn't mean that part.
Right. Yeah. So that we can then, and then once we pass it today, our budget process will be complete.
Correct.
Yes.
We want, if it's passed, you know, today, then we would commit it in the accounting system right after this.
Yep. And by the way, we will be doing that with all the budget documents going forward, just for clarification. We will be passing them. Very good. Okay. Is there any discussion on, uh, 2022 Ordinance 1A? Any questions or comments, discussions?
No questions.
Any, any comments from members of the public? Seeing none, Commissioner Carpenter, you're recognized for any comment or question. I need to close.
Thank you. I just, uh, you know, thanks again to everybody who, uh, helped work on this and, um, appreciate, uh, our auditor for the, uh, uh, presentation today. And, um, you know, one of the things you mentioned is getting our reserves, uh, back up to closer to historical averages. And, you know, I know that's a thing you and I have, uh, discussed in the past and appreciate, um, your and the whole team's continuing focus on trying to get us in that direction. You know, one of my hopes, uh, uh, is that this commission continues to stay dedicated to that as a mission. Um, you know, I think one of the things we learned back in 2008, 2009 is that, uh, the, the, you know, the more work that you've done in advance of an economic downturn, uh, the better. And, um, I think we have a lot more work to do on that. And just grateful to the whole team and everybody who's worked on that and the budget in general. And with that, I close.
Thank you. With that, please call the roll.
Uh, Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
That brings us to 2022 Ordinance 1B. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2022 Ordinance 1B. Similar ordinance to 1A, an ordinance to adopt the annual budget of Clay County, Missouri for the fiscal year beginning on January 1, 2022, and ending on December 31, 2022. And this resolves the issue of leaving the accounts associated with the operations of the Clay County Prosecutor's Office. Out of 1A, 1B is focused entirely on only approving the accounts associated with the operations of the Clay County Prosecutor's Office.
Mr. Administrator?
And Auditor Herbert is at the podium.
Mr. Auditor, please proceed.
Victor Herbert, Clay County Auditor. Again, yes, so I mean, same exact language. This is just, yeah, for the, for the prosecutor's office.
Very well. Um, I will make the motion for passage of 2022 Ordinance 1B. Uh, discussion? Do you have any discussion? Uh, comment from the public? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Uh, Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
I'm going to recuse myself.
She recused. So I will vote yes.
And Commissioner Nolte.
Thank you. That brings us to 2022 Ordinance 2A. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2022 Ordinance 2A is an ordinance to adopt an appropriation order for the annual budget of Clay County, Missouri for the fiscal year, previously stated January 1, 2022, and ending the, on December 31, 2022. And this again goes back to, for all accounts associated with the operations of the county, with the exception of the Clay County Prosecutor's Office on 2A. And, uh, Auditor Herbert is again available for further comment.
Please proceed.
Uh, this is just the appropriation order, as the administrator said. Um, and so, uh, no changes from proposed to adopted. So that's really all I have on that.
Are there any questions of the auditor? Seeing none. Is there a motion related to 2022 Ordinance 2A?
Make a motion to pass 2022 Ordinance 2A.
Motion has been made for the passage of 2022 Ordinance 2A. Discussion?
No, thank you.
Any, any comments from the public? Seeing none. Commissioner Thompson, you're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Uh, Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
That brings us to 2022 Ordinance 2B. Mr. Administrator?
And Commissioners, 2022 Ordinance 2B is a similar ordinance adopting the appropriation order for the annual budget of Clay County, Missouri for the fiscal year beginning on January 1, 2022, and ending on December 31, 2022. And this is to address all accounts that are associated with the operations of the Clay County Prosecutor's Office.
Mr. Auditor, do you have anything to add?
No comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion related to, uh, 2022 Ordinance 2B?
Uh, Commissioner, I move that we approve 2022 Ordinance 2B.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2022 Ordinance 2B. Discussion? Is there any comment from the public? Seeing none. Commissioner Carpenter, you're recognized to close.
I'm closed.
Please call the roll.
Uh, Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
And Commissioner Thompson.
I'm going to recuse myself.
And I will voting, I will vote yes. That brings us, by the way, thank you to the budget team and all involved. Uh, very good job. Uh, I think particularly as Commissioner Car, Carpenter pointed out, uh, the, uh, reserves becoming more robust is certainly something that is a, a good, uh, a good, uh, sign when it comes to our budget. That brings us to 2022-
Excuse me, Mr. Commissioner, can I add one comment to that?
Oh, please go ahead.
Uh, again, it can't be overstated how valuable the finance team was, led by the auditor, uh, to get us to the, where we are today. But the other side of this is the response that was made by each and every department as they were reached out to asking for their input relative to budget. It was a, I won't call it a seamless process, but it was very well organized. It was very efficient. Responses were very prompt. Asks were very reasoned and well thought out. Uh, I think this exercise that we undertook this particular year will, would be a great template going forward. It was extremely well done by all parties.
I couldn't agree more. Thank you so much for making those comments. That brings us to 2022-04. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2022-04 is to approve three change orders for Boone Construction Company. This is a request from Highway. And Deputy Administrator Walters is here to make additional comments.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Commission. Carl Walters, Deputy County Administrator, Clay County. These three change orders I bring in front of you are for the Greenwood Bridge replacement through Boone, Boone Construction. The first change order extends the completion date from 120-day calendar days to 170 calendar days since we had a, uh, bond issue, you know, trying to get it refinanced and whatnot. It put them back a month and a half. So now we're into the winter months, which has kind of shut them down right now with the weather and stuff. So there's an extension to that, which is no cost to us. We approve that also through MoDOT and, uh, engineering firm. Number two change order is the contract of, that reduces the cost of $21,540. Due to the traffic change and the cost, uh, Clay County has, uh, had the bridge close signs up. And we have the signage up that states that the bridge is closed. So they gave us money back on that reduction through their, uh, contract. And also doing the pile driving, uh, for the vents on the bridge. When the pile driving is given, uh, usually it's estimated from 40 to 80 feet on the H-beams that are driven in. And so there was a cost reduction on that because now that they've got this new system that they can turn around, put it on the beam, lessens the strikes onto the metal. So then, you know, they don't have to go as deep because then they've hit solid, solid rock. So that was a reduction in that as well. So on the number three change order is an increase to construction by the cost of $60,125 in addition that the engineering, uh, since we had, uh, taken a little time on the, uh, bid for the bridge and the monies to allocate the bridge, w- we had some flooding happening and we had some extra erosion that happened because we have some road build for that bridge because we had raised it up five feet. So in that lieu of, the contractor found the erosion issue, which had brought to our attention, which had told the engineer, they'd went in front of MoDOT, see if we could get under, under the BRO 80-20 match. And they did. So that was an increase on that part of it right there. So in lieu of that, uh, in that BRO monies, it's, comes to the difference of the 21 and the 60,000 comes to $38,585. And that actually falls underneath the BRO program, which I talked about, it's 80-20. And our part of it comes out of the soft match monies.
Are there any questions for the deputy administrator?
No, thank you.
No question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very well. Um, this did, this did involve the expenditure money. So this would go on for regular agenda at our next meeting. Is that consistent with everyone? 2022-04 will be appear on next week's, uh, regular agenda then. That brings us to 2022-06. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2022-06 is a request to, is to approve the request to place a, in quotes, "service to mankind" monument on county grounds that are in front of the Liberty City Hall. This is a request from the Liberty Sertoma Club. And Deputy Administrator, uh, Koontz is here to add comments to the request.
Please proceed.
Hi. Good afternoon. Donna Koontz, Deputy County Administrator, Facilities. Uh, yes, I am speaking on behalf of the Sertoma Club. They have a monument, uh, and have had a monument, I should say, that was in front of Liberty City Hall in the form of memorial-type bricks. The settling of the earth kept moving the bricks. They become uneven. And currently the city is planning a remodel of the front area and they have asked them to please remove the bricks. So they have come up with a, um, a new approach, um, to do, and this is an annual award that they give, that they call the Service of Mankind, in the form of a bronze monument sign with name plaques that would be attached, um, to the monument. Uh, this is, uh, the location is where our fountain is across the street. We have some steps that lead down to Rooney Justice. Uh, this would be placed at one of the, uh, level landing areas of a step. And if they happen to have funding or future funding, they would also like to place a bench there at that location. Excuse me. Do you have any questions for me today?
Are there any questions of the deputy administrator?
No question. Thank you.
Um, was I right in that there is no expense to the county for this or?
Uh, that is correct. They are just asking permission to place it here. Uh, they will, all the expense is on them. And then there, it's a very low maintenance type project with the materials they have planned for. But should they've also included, should there have to be anything, uh, any type of maintenance or repair to the bench that they are prepared to take care of that expense?
Well, there's some truly wonderful names on here. Um, there's no doubt about that. Uh, that being the case, um, are there any comments from any commissioners? Any questions? Seeing none. Uh, I think this could go on consent without any, any problem. If that is, like, good with everyone else? 2022-06 will be on next week's consent agenda. That brings us to 2022-11.
Commissioners, 2022-11 is to appoint a member to the Airport Advisory Board. This is a, uh, request from the commission and I will return uh, the floor to the presiding commissioner.
Uh, yes, we, uh, recently appointed one person to a vacancy on the, uh, airport board, Airport Advisor- Advisory Board. They had one additional vacancy. I would like to nominate Samuel Taylor for that position. I believe, I don't have his resume right here, his application, but I believe it's been circulated to the other commissioners. Has it? Not. Okay.
Next week. He'll be in next week's packet.
Okay. Oh, absolutely regular, yes. So he, you know, he is, you know, highly qualified gentleman. The reason that he was not included in the last nomination process was because I had to confirm that he was indeed still interested after he had made his application. Time had passed, so I wanted to verify his interest before going forward. So you will certainly be getting the, the application in shortly. So I would like to nominate Samuel Taylor, and this is something that I think is appropriate for regular agenda, if that sounds okay with everyone.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Real quick, was there any other applicants that applied besides Mr. Taylor? Is he the only one?
No, he was the only one that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
With the exception of the one that we approved the last time. So 2022-11 will be on next week's regular agenda. That brings us to the end of our agenda. So would anyone like to make a motion for the disposal of those items which appeared on today's regular
Commissioner, I will move that we put the following items on next Wednesday, 6:00 PM's consent agenda. as well as 2022-06. And I believe the remaining items, aside from those that we have already approved here today, will, I move, to be placed on next week's regular agenda.
That certainly agrees with my tally. Motion has been made to place 2022-10 and 2022-06 on consent. The remaining items that were not passed today would then go to the regular agenda. Discussion? Commissioner Thompson?
No.
You're recognized to close, Commissioner.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Uh, Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
That brings us to comments on non-agenda items. Are there any members of the public who'd like to comment on any items not on today's agenda? Seeing none. Are there any office holders who'd like to comment on any items not on today's agenda? Seeing none. Are there any agencies who'd like to comment on items not on today's agenda? Seeing none. Mr. Administrator, if you'd like, if you have any comments you'd like to make at this time?
I would not. Thank you.
Very well. That brings us to Commissioner comments. Go ahead and start. This is the last meeting. Unless something happens, that we will have our current administrator, Mr. Salisbury, here with us. Want to express our appreciation that having served in this past year has been a great influence on the county, both from a technical point of view, as far as being able to actually run the county, keep the trains running on time, so to speak. But also, his calm, steady demeanor has, I think, brought a very welcome change to the county as far as the civility and the appreciation that has been shown towards all of our employees. So you've really brought remarkable changes. As I've said on more than one occasion, we are a very different county than we were 13 months ago, and in no small measure, thanks to your efforts to not only do the job, but also to do it in a way that was inclusive and respectful of all our employees. And I know that there's a great deal of appreciation in this building for what you have done. I think if it were possible, we would probably keep you much, much longer. But we do understand that we only, we only had you for a limited amount of time, and that's, that was the original arrangement. But it has gone, in my estimation, too quickly. We will, you will certainly be missed and fondly thought of throughout this building for some time to come.
Thank you for the kind words.
With that, we do have a, it's not so much a resolution, but it is an expression of a lot of different comments from members of the government here that I would like to present to you. And it is submitted by all of the employees of Clay County. And they are basically snippets of each one. In many ways, I think that is almost more meaningful than the thanks of the commission because, you know, we obviously work together, but I mean, it shows the depth and the breadth of the influence that you've had in this government, and that everybody from top to bottom is greatly appreciative of your hard work and your, your kind approach to the way this job needed to be done. So we certainly appreciate very much what you've been doing.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. Yes. Tom, what are we going to do without you? You have jumped on board with us for the past year to clean up the mess that we walked in on. And we found ourselves in quite the mess. And you will be missed. And I don't know who's going to sit next to me and make
Smart aleck comments.
witty banter to keep me quietly chuckling to myself over here. So I don't know. So, but you will be missed, and I'm sure we will still see you around, and you'll be always welcome.
I'm a resident of Clay County.
Of course you are.
And I appreciate the nice comments. Thank you.
And of course, you will be mostly missed by the auditor, who will wonder what he will do without being referred to as the permanent fixture at the podium. Commissioner Carpenter?
I just want to extend the remarks of the other two commissioners. And, you know, when I, when Commissioner Thompson and I were, you know, first elected and coming into this role, I know that I had a lot of optimism about it. But I also knew that we were coming into a very, very difficult and challenging situation. And so in addition to optimism, there were a lot of concerns around how it was going to go and how smoothly things would play out. And I think we were very fortunate to have ended up with you as our interim administrator. I don't think it could have gone better, and I'm incredibly grateful to you. Sincerely, you've made this last year, I think, as good as it could have possibly been for me and for the county. So thank you. You have my lifelong, thank you.
Thank you. Well, now you require me to make a comment, and it'll be brief. First of all, I appreciate the commission giving me this opportunity. And second of all, it's been a considerable honor and pleasure to work amongst the many very dedicated staff that serve the citizens in the residents of Clay County. And that's, that will be my takeaway, is the honor to spend the time I did with those folks. I appreciate it.
And I think there may, you're going to have some?
Do the equivalent of the meeting sessions?
Well, yeah, but I wanted to go ahead and, I will do that, then we will go back. But I want to make sure that we got that out there, as long as we were kind of in the meeting. So with that, approval of the minutes of previous sessions, we have four, no, excuse me, five meeting minutes to approve. Is there a motion related to those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the November 7th at 2:00 PM, the November 19th at 1:30, the November 22nd at 1:30, the November 29th at 10:30, December 1st at 6:00 PM. Minutes.
Very well. Motion has been made for the approval of the minutes of the sessions, including November 17, 2:00 PM, November 19, 1:30 PM, November 22, 1:30 PM, November 29, 10:30 AM, December 1, 6:00 PM. Discussion?
No, thank you.
Seeing none, you're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Uh, Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
That brings us to written reports. I see we seem to have some here.
Uh, yes, you have two. December monthly revenue and fees from the county clerk's office, and then we have the December monthly cash basis from the county auditor.
Very well. We have no executive sessions. I believe we, before we adjourn, I just want to make sure, Brandy, that we have
Small cupcakes and, uh, we'll be ready for it.
We will be having cupcakes here in a few moments coming in. So to commemorate the event, and certainly we'll have a nice little discussion. Before you leave with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you all.